All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We're going to have our invocation by Pastor Anton Elro of Greater Solid Rock Baptist Church in Rivendell. It will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Let us bow our heads. Dear Attorney Father, we thank you for these commissioners and these citizens that are here today to take care of the business of the county. Father God, we ask you to crown our head with wisdom, understanding, knowledge. Father God, we ask you to bless every heart that's representing, every household that's representing, every square inch of the county that's representing, every district. We ask you to bless these elected officials to take care of the business of this county. We ask you to bless all those that are present here today. We ask you to ordain this, sanction this. We ask that everything that is said and done be acceptable in thy sight. It is in our Son Jesus Christ, your Son Jesus Christ's name which we pray, in which God's people said, "Amen."
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Amen.
Happy holidays and welcome to our December 20th regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments at this time?
Yes, Chairman.
Commissioner Davis.
I'd like to pull item number 15, ordinance 2022-71 off of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Franklin, any questions or statements? Now, before we move on, I would like to get with Mr. Reed, our staff attorney, to have him to give us the rationale behind this proposed legislation. Please, Mr. Reed.
Good evening, Chairman, Madam Vice Chair and Board. If you'll give me one second, I'd like to kind of first give a little bit of history why this ordinance came on the agenda for today. I want to start off by showing for the public as well where, so if you go to the county's website, that right there has online services. That next tab has Code of Clayton County. The next tab over. And then go to Part 1, Article 2, Section 2-6. So that right there is our current law. The current law states that when there's a vacancy, that it has to be, a vacancy on the Board of Commissioners, it has to be filled within, a call for a special election within five days. The election has to be held not less than 30 days, no more than 45 days after the vacancy occurs. And then the last sentence in that section says, "After the person is elected to the Board of Commissioners, whether in the regular election or the special election, to fill a vacancy, his removal from the commissioned district shall not create a vacancy on the Board of Commissioners if such commissioner remains a qualified resident of Clayton County and such person shall continue to serve." That's been the law since 1971. How this ordinance came to be presented was because when Commissioner Gregory passed, I received a number of phone calls, not just internally but externally, about how and the timing of the filling of the vacancy for District 1. Because they looked at our ordinance that was here and they compared it with state law, which is different. State law, 212540, has a different process for when special elections are to take place. In an even year, it's when certain months, first meeting in March, I'm sorry, third, Tuesday in March. In odd years, it's also the first meeting, the first date for a special election is also in March. So seeing that there was a conflict, the proposed ordinance was to remedy that so that our ordinance is in line with state law. The last sentence that was in the agenda, or I'm sorry, on the proposed ordinance is the same sentence that has been the law, at least that's currently part of our charter since 1971. I'm going to come back to that in a second. The second issue, these are not related, is Section 6-1. The proposal was, and actually I'm going to ask if you would go to the third tab and scroll down a little bit, a little bit more. Okay, let me stop right there. So if you look at the Section 2-6, as I just said, that second sentence is the exact same language as that has been in our county ordinance since 1971. Okay, scroll down a little bit. Section 6-1, what this was, the first sentence basically says, "If there is a vacancy in the office of any county officer by any reason whatsoever, and the county officer is defined by the Constitution, if there's any reason other than the expiration of that officer's term of service, the vacancy shall be filled by state law." There are four county officers. Each of them have their own statutory scheme of how they are, their offices are to be filled when there's a vacancy. The county nor this board does not have the power to change state law as it relates to how constitutional officers fill vacancies. What this other sentence says is that if there wasn't a process, we are leaving the chief deputy or the highest ranking officer in whatever office that's affected would be serving in that time until the office is filled. So it's a temporary status until it's filled by election, appointment, or otherwise. I'm aware that there was a opinion from Legislative Council about whether you all had the power to do that. I've talked with them about that. And I told them that we were not moving forward on that issue. So I'm not going to go into right now what he said about both of these issues, but the way that he was looking at this was whether you all were trying to put someone in the space of a county office. You all don't have the power to do that. This ordinance didn't give you the power to do that. And it doesn't even speak to you trying to fill a county office with a particular individual. So this was an issue that came up in our role as representing this county, and I mean it being the county attorney, to correct these errors or areas where there is either inconsistency with state law or providing a temporary filling. And there's state law that talks about how that can be done. So my recommendation, of course, is to pull this. We will talk with Legislative Council. And if they feel as if that the statutory provision touches on, affects a county office, which frankly, this mirrors what state law says, which is, state law is, the chief deputy fills their vacancy until there's an election or appointment. That's what state law provides. But if they feel that it's affecting it, we can bring this back to you either with those corrections or bring it through our legislative delegation if they feel it has to come through the legislative delegation. But that is the reason why that these items were brought before you this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Reed. I have, first question is, you said you receive calls, but it's the board that generally would make, you all would make recommendations to the board, but they're usually presented in a work session. What's interesting about this is that it showed up later, after the work session, number one. Number two, who actually had this added to the agenda? Because if a board member puts anything on this agenda, there's a name added to it. So who was, who gave the instructions to add this to the agenda?
The board did not, no one on this board put this on the agenda. Our office, like any other department, can put things on the agenda for the board to approve. Now, the, this issue, in order to change this part of the law, part of the law, you have to have a home rule, home rule process, which means it has to be read twice. So there was an advertisement placed. This is the first read, if this was going to go forward, which again, doesn't seem like this should be going forward at this point. But if this was a regular home rule like you've done before, there would be a first vote. Two weeks later, with your next regular meeting, there'd be another vote, and then that would change your ordinance.
So it was not brought before the board until it was put on the agenda?
Like any other issue.
But we have a work session. Okay, the other thing, no disrespect to you, but you said the charter. Remember, as a county, we have an enabling, charters are for cities. So it's our enabling that actually prescribes our laws within our jurisdiction as the county. The other thing I think that is very ambiguous in all of this is the fact that we got to understand that, just as the opinion stated, that constitutional officers, they fall under the Georgia Constitution. And so with that, I don't understand why it even got convoluted about commissioners. It just really took us by storm and blindsided us. And unfortunately, I think that it's something that definitely could have been avoided, but I'm glad that you're bringing it forth to us today of why you did it, but I'm glad that we're taking it off as well. And I think that the Georgia Constitution is definitely very clear and explicit on the next steps for any of those constitutional offices. And then also, one of the things that you didn't mention too, was that, you mentioned about Commissioner Gregory's passing, but the place that you read is really about somebody still residing within the county, which we know, if we look at Section 2, it states that until said time that an election can take place, that basically the four, the remaining commissioners make up the whole because of the fact that we are a board, an operating board of five. So I think there's a little bit of ambiguity in there. We don't have a chief deputy, so that couldn't even apply to us. And it says Georgia Constitution. We're not constitutional officers. So I think the entire thing was a little bit skewed and convoluted.
So what I do agree with you is that someone, or somehow, these two separate issues were read as if they were one issue.
Correct.
And so it is not one issue, it's two separate issues. And which is why I said, the first part dealing with 2-6 is what happens with this board. And the language that is in that bottom section is the language that, when the General Assembly wrote it in 1971, that had not changed. It's been the same since 1971. If I had, or if you had tried to change that, that might have been another issue because you're doing something contrary to what the General Assembly already gave. But what this was, was to get the board aligned with when you're feeling special, when you are filling a vacancy on the commission, that you're not going with a process that was ordained in 1971, but it's a process that's aligned with what the current law is. And whether that comes through this board or comes through the legislative delegation, I don't think that's an issue that should still remain on this, before this, in the county's ordinances. And that's my job, that's what you all pay me to do, to correct errors when there's inconsistency in the law.
Commissioner Hambrecht, you have some?
Well, no, they've covered it because I've gotten several calls with different subject matters, saying that the commissioners were trying to take control, and then some said it had something to do with other departments and all. So yeah, I'm glad you have given this explanation, so thank you so much.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you. Again, I've gotten several calls as well, and thank you for clearing that up. Because again, I think the part where it said the chief deputy or highest ranking official within the affected county, that was an issue as well. So thank you for clearing that up as well.
One other thing, Chuck. Okay, so with us leaving it like it is, are we in tune with what the state law says?
The Section 2-6 right now, what's currently on the books is not consistent with state law. So whether that is changed through, after the legislative delegation, or whether someone thinks that this board can do it, it needs to be changed so that it's consistent with state law.
Yeah, so maybe we can bring that to our delegation and let them get it changed on the state level.
That certainly, I'm talking with the Office of the Legislative General Council, and if they, if that's the way that the board wants to go, we certainly can, you know, present that to the delegation, ask them to...
I see our chairperson in the audience, so that may be something that you all would take up. Anyway, we'll have a discussion.
Requested, if you ask them, we'll consider it.
Any other questions?
Yes. As we can see by the attendance, we have all gotten a share amount of calls on this. But I'm glad we are reviewing something that is somewhat archaic in our code and our ordinances. But one of the things I did recognize was the issue of residency within this, saying that pretty much if any commissioner moves outside of their district, that seat is not vacant. Is that under state, or is that just local?
That is, that is what the General Assembly did for this board in 1971. So there is a possibility, and again, Legislative Council will look into that as to whether that should be amended, to be changed, to have another issue. I can say that there is an unintended consequence that when, you know, this board undergoes redistricting every 10 years, if you had it where if the commissioner was no longer in their district, a board of three could pass a map that would make two of you all reside outside of your district and make call for a special election. That's an unintended consequence, but again, if the board decides to go through Legislative Council to change that, that's something they can look into to see how to make sure that doesn't, you know, happen.
Right, because I know of some counties, right, that that happened this year. Right, with the redistricting and all, it drew a couple commissioners out of their district. And of course, they had to have an election and elect someone else. That person could not continue to serve for that district, so just want to make it clear.
And again, that happens, redistricting is once every 10 years.
That's correct.
But as far as I'm concerned, that 1971 law, I think that citizens, when they elect their commissioner to represent their district in their area, they need to live in that district. But that's not two cents worth. But that's something, again, I will speak with our legislative delegation, just to get some insights, some further insights. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Those in favor, aye. Then the vote, the motion was to take it off. Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. Any others on the agenda? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, our next item is Flint River Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year. This is presented by Commissioner Felicia Franklin.
All right. So can the Boys and Girls Club members please, please come down, including our winner, none other than Mr. Elias Dennis. He has won as our Boys and Girls Club representative for all of Metro Atlanta. And I got to bring up Ms. Michaela as well. Ms. Michaela is our youth, Junior Youth of the Year, representing Flint River. And on record, I got to make sure y'all hear me when I say that, Flint River beat out that club over in Henry County that's always putting Shaq picture on everything. That's all I got to say.
Now, let me correct something before you even see it. They don't even know this is going to happen. But you know, oftentimes, we have those who come in our community and they do give back to the community. So on behalf of Rockhaven Homes, who you know have joined our community over six years ago, and they actually are building a subdivision that was recently approved on 1941, and they're bringing in restaurants and new stores, grocery, night stores, as well as lakefront properties. Well, when they found out about our winners, y'all ready for this? They decided to award each of you, even though it says Clayton County, it was going straight from them to you, $5,000. It is very important that we support our students as they do well. Both of these youth are absolutely amazing. They're headed off to college. And I want you to know that that Flint River Boys and Girls Club not only serves all the county, but it sits right there square between three districts. And Flint River Community, I heard you. You said you felt left out. Well, you no longer left out because we're for everything that we can into there. And moms, congratulations. Mr. Michael is the director of that center. Y'all, they're doing an amazing job. And I see somebody from Flint River out here. Come on up here, G. Come on up here. He's another prodigy of Flint River and Clayton County. Come on and get in this picture with us. Chief Green, come on up too. Any other Flint River folks out there? Come on. She don't want to come. He's got to go on and represent us on the regional and then even firm on the national level. Yes, oh goodness, the president wants to speak.
I just wanted to say that I am honored and humbled to be here and to receive this today. I'd like to thank Commissioner Franklin and the rest of the commissioners who allowed me to be here. And I just wanted to say that this has helped me to ignite my dream of becoming a veterinarian and opening my own life as a veterinarian. Thanks a lot.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any other items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, our next items are board appointments.
All right.
This starts with item number 25.
All right, first board appointment is to the Board of Elections Registration. Diane Givens' term on the Elections Registration Board will expire December 31, 2022. New term will begin December 31, 2022 and expire December 31, 2026. Commissioner Davis, this is your selection.
Yes, I want to go ahead and hold this until the first meeting of 2023, which is what, January 3rd?
Is that next meeting, January 3rd?
I believe it is.
Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, next board appointment is Parks and Recreation. Cheltenham Building's term on Parks and Recreation Board will expire December 31, 2022. New appointment will begin December 31, 2022 and expire December 31, 2026. Commissioner Davis.
Again, I'm going to hold that one until January 3rd as well, 2023.
Next board appointment is Pension Board. Catherine Dotson was appointed to the Pension Board in February 2005. Ms. Dotson has resigned effective January 1, 2023. New term would begin immediately and would expire at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners' Chair. It's my selection, I would like to recommend Debbie Decker. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item number 28, ordinance 2022-277, Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Good evening again. Ordinance 2022-277 is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County specifically to amend Appendix A, Article 1, Basic Provisions, Section 1.5, defined words, Article 3, zoning and district intent, uses and standards. Section 3.29 LI, Light Industrial District Intent, permitted uses and conditional uses. And Section 3-36, land use matrix, to define and regulate community donation centers, to repeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, resolutions, rules, and regulations to provide our severability, to provide an effective data disorderness for other purposes. The effect of this ordinance to allow community donation centers in the general business zoning district as well as the light industrial, mixed industrial, and high industrial zoning districts. And this was an ordinance or an amendment that was initiated by the Board of Commissioners. So then, after public hearing, then you all will vote on that.
All right, this is a public hearing, so in reference to this request that was posed by the BOC, Board of Commissioners, is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this request? Anybody like to speak in favor? Anybody in opposition? Anybody opposed, like to speak?
What I, I don't necessarily think is opposition, but my name is Timothy Bondell-Jefferson, Clayton County, Georgia. I think it's opposition. My concern is the donation centers that we see in the parking lots and gas stations that are not regulated. And once one is set up, it becomes a dumping ground. So for that particular reason, if we can redefine the donation center and what type of structure would go along with that as far as proper management, that is one of my major concerns. Thank you.
All right, hearing, seeing none, I'd like to pose a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Next item, item number 29, ordinance 2022-278.
Again, this is, well, ordinance 2022-278, an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County specifically to amend Appendix A, Article 6, Development Standards, Section 6.34, Landscaping Standards LA, regarding interior planting for truck parking and parking islands, to repeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, resolution, rules, and regulations to provide for severability, to provide an effective data disorderness for other purposes. ZAG recommended that there was an alternative text amendment that in lieu of landscape islands, that truck parking areas may shift the equivalent landscape area to the perimeter of the property, and that a landscape plan shall be prepared to show the location and size of the landscape islands without the shift. And the equivalent landscape area may be shifted on the second landscape plan. In addition to trees, perennials, and mulch shall be installed and maintained. The effect of this ordinance is to basically to allow, remove truck islands from within the parking area so that when they're driving around, they're not running over the islands and damaging both the islands and trees and things like that. It's making it more consistent with what general development standards are for truck parking. And again, this is a board-initiated text amendment, so there is a public hearing, and after that, you all may vote on it.
All right. This is a public hearing as well. Anybody would like to speak in favor of the Board of Commissioners' request? Anybody like to speak in favor of?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say so.
Come forward, Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. As far as this change goes, I want you to know I'm in favor of changing the islands and not having where big trucks are involved. Being an operator and holding a B license... Being an operator and holding a B license, how hard it is to maneuver trucks in and around places and especially on our streets, all you have to do is look at the gutters and the places and signs that have been run over. Now, in a big, where big trucks operate, you're right, get rid of those islands, the trees and the maintenance of those places. However, on the outside, they should be made to have a landscape that is with green grass and free of garbage. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposition to? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
Next item, item number thirty, Ordinance twenty-two-two-seven-nine.
Ordinance twenty-two-two-seven-nine is an ordinance to amend the code of Clayton County specifically to amend Appendix A, Article one, Section one point five, defined words. Article three, Section three point one-five, OI, Office Institutional District Intent, permitted uses and conditional uses. Article three, Section three point three-six, Land Use Matrix. And Article six, Development Standards Regarding Accessory Permitted and Conditional Uses in the OI Zoning District. To modify the zoning ordinance regarding accessory permitted and conditional uses in the OI zoning district, to appeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, resolutions, rules and regulations, to provide for severability, to provide effective data disorderness and for other purposes. The effect of this ordinance is to, when the OI district was adopted by the board, there was a portion of the conditional uses that was not included in the matrix. And so what it does is add several permitted uses to OI, which is ambulatory surgery centers, automobile broker, cafeterias, snack shop and coffee shops, CBD oil sales, banks and loan associations, college universities, vocational technical schools, fitness centers and health clubs, medical offices, clinics, physical therapy facilities, child and adult daycare center, pharmacy, photographic studio, professional business offices, research experimental and testing laboratories. And it moves to conditional uses, personal service shops, dry cleaning agencies, pressing establishments and laundry pickup stations, service, labor, fraternal organization, meeting halls and offices, funeral home, mortuary and crematory, places of worship, theaters and amphitheaters and wireless telecommunications facility towers. And also changes the land use matrix to reflect all those changes as well. Again, this is a public hearing, and so after the public hearing, the board may vote on that.
All right, anybody here would like to speak in favor of the BOC's request? Anybody would like to speak in favor of? Anybody opposed? Anybody in opposition? Hearing seen none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions?
I do have one. The intent of the ordinance, I have no issue with. I guess the only problem I see with it is the CBD sales being within the OI. My thought is for the safety of our community, I would like to see that under CUP, within that CUP framework. And if we can understand why it's not there, what was the rationale behind it?
As far as the rationale, I'll ask somebody from Community Development to bring that to the board.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. The reason for having a CBD, we consider CBD as medicinal, just like a pharmacy, because of the state approval of it and its uses. And that was the reason why.
Thank you. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are zoning hearings.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. The, this item is BOC two-two-zero-eight-das-zero-two-two-one, which is a request by Kensho Properties to rezone twenty-four-twenty-six Lake Harbor Road, Morro, Georgia, three-zero-two-six-zero, from OI to RS-one-ten, so that the existing zinc family detached structure can be used as a zinc family residence. Said property consisting of plus or minus zero point two-nine acres is in the medium density residential future ranges category, located at the intersection of Castlewood and Lake Harbor and is further known as parcel number one-three-one-four-zero-C-B-zero-three-five. This property was rezoned to OI by the previous, one of the previous property owners, who wanted to use it as, as an office. However, they have sold it to somebody who wants to have, use it as a conforming of a residence. Staff's recommendation is approval and so, and same thing with the ZAG's recommendation is for approval.
Yeah, will you read that parcel number again, please?
Is the applicant present? Please come forward. Would you like to save any minutes for a rebuttal should somebody be opposed to you?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to save some minutes for a rebuttal? Usually about two minutes, just in case somebody's opposed to your request, then you can come back up and answer their question.
Sure.
Okay, two minutes. Okay. State your name for them.
Alrighty, so my name is Jayla Mullen. I am here on behalf of Kensho Properties. Dave Miller, who is the owner of Kensho Properties, has authorized me to present on his behalf, so that is why I'm here today. This is probably the least complex case on the agenda tonight, but this, as he stated earlier, this house was previously zoned residential, but the previous owner zoned it to commercial for a specific use that is no longer needed. So our request is just to, now that it's in our ownership, to rezone it back to its original intent and natural purpose of residential RS-one-ten. So there are no building plans. The house, as we stated earlier, was already constructed. There are no actual structural or landscaping changes other than our routine trim and mowing that we do on properties that we acquire. All we did was just a small cosmetic interior remodeling, which you'll see in an upcoming slide. Here's our survey. Okay, this is like skipping multiple slides. So like, yeah, as I said earlier, this property is in a residential area. And you'll see here in these pictures that it's made apparent. This thing is like, this is what it currently looks like after we did our cosmetic remodeling, exterior and interior. And again, we're just requesting a change in zoning description from office institution to RS-one-ten residential.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody here, it's a public hearing, so is there anybody here who is in favor of this applicant's request? Anybody in favor, like to speak? Anybody opposed? Is anybody opposed? All right, hearing seen none. Do you have anything to add? You got two minutes.
That'll be all. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Good evening. I make a motion that we accept the request by Kensho Properties to rezone twenty-four-twenty-six Lake Harbor Road, Morro, Georgia.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
The next item on the agenda is BOC-das-two-two-zero-eight-das-zero-two-two-three, which is a request by CSC Properties, LLC, for a conditional use permit to operate a car wash at thirty-one-zero-two Anvil Block Road, Ellenwood, Georgia, three-zero-two-nine-four, which is in the Ellenwood PUD zoning district and the Highway forty-two overlay district. Said property consisting of plus or minus one point three-eight acres is further known as parcel twelve-two-three-four-A-A-zero-two-two and located at the intersection of Anvil Block Road and Lunsford Drive. Staff is recommending denial because this is at the gateway to the Ellenwood PUD. And ZAG is recommending denial as well.
Is the applicant present? Is the applicant present? All right. Commissioner Anderson, do you want to go ahead with the public hearing or how would you like to move?
I would go on and make the motion if we can.
You had to do the public hearing first.
Public hearing first, yeah, I need the motion.
No, you want to go ahead and do that as far, as opposed to just tabling it?
Yeah.
All right, get it out of the way. All right, this is a public hearing on this matter. Is there anybody here would like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? All right, Dr. Anderson.
I move that we accept the ZAG boys' recommendation for denial for requests for CSC Properties, LLC, for a conditional use permit to operate a car wash at thirty-one-zero-two Anvil Block Road, Ellenwood, Georgia.
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
The next item, agenda item number thirty-three, BOC-two-two-zero-nine-das-zero-two-three-seven to operate a convenience store with gas sales at thirty-four-fifteen Jonesburg Road. The applicant has requested that this be tabled to the next meeting.
Commissioner Davis?
I received and accepted the motion to table this.
What's the date?
January seventeenth.
We didn't give a date.
January seventeenth.
So we can table it till January seventeenth?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
The next item is BOC-das-two-two-one-zero-das-zero-two-four-two, a request by Stephanie Griffin for a conditional use permit to operate a special event facility at twelve-sixty-eight and twelve-seventy, Highway one-thirty-eight Southwest, Riverdale, Georgia, three-zero-two-nine-six, which is in the PUD zoning district. Said property consisting of plus or minus two point four-nine acres is further known as parcel thirteen-two-hundred-B-B-zero-two-eight and located between Lake Ridge Parkway and Broadhurst Drive. Plan and zoning recommended denial, however, ZAG is recommending approval with two conditions. Attendance for all events must not exceed fifty percent persons. The hours of operations are be limited to Friday, five PM to eleven PM, Saturday, ten AM to eleven PM and Sunday, eleven AM to six PM.
Is the applicant present? Come forward, please. State your name for us and whether or not you would like to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Griffin. And I would like to use my time.
You don't want to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal?
Um, sure.
Use minutes, two minutes, just in case somebody's opposed to you.
Okay, yes, yes.
Then you come back up and speak. So set the timer, Annie. Okay, we're good.
Okay, again, my name is Stephanie Griffin. Just a backstory, our journey began as a COVID-friendly business where we were first in our county to do the big yard signs that you all see today very commonly. We extended that, we started photo booth rentals, the three-sixty booth you all have seen as people are going crazy for. And now it's time for us to actually have a brick and mortar home. So that's why we're here today to ask for a special event facility. We have served over five Clayton County schools. I'm actually an educator for its county myself. We partnered with Clayton County Board of Education recently with their superintendent, superintendent, I'm sorry, holiday party, along with, we did this financial, the Financial Literacy Program kickoff at Charles Drew High School. We are looking for a clean, safe venue. Our target market is veterans, graduations, class reunions, holiday celebrations, corporate events, HOA meetings, also seminars that cover educational purposes, home buying, financial literacy. As stated, we would not exceed more than fifty guests per event and even less than that if needed. We do have soundproof walls, so it wouldn't disturb any of our surrounding neighbors. Clearly marked exit strategy posters. We have, we won't allow any open flame indoors, four clearly marked exit light approved by the fire marshal. Security, at least two off-duty officers at the, at the minimum, they would be peace officers, I'm sorry, post-certified officers. Lighting is lit up like a football field, security cameras, twenty-four hour surveillance, ample parking. We have two industrial-sized trash receptacles on each side of the building. No outside, only outside catering will be allowed and staff is CPR certified. Also, whoo, y'all can see my heart beating on my chest. But really knowledgeable, experienced staff. We have a background of veterans, my parents are both vets. I'm education, my husband, he's from the medical field. And we just know this is something that that particular community needs and that it would be a valuable asset. We also be able to offer jobs as well, job placement. So we would be very grateful and gracious for you all to give us your blessing today.
Okay, thank you. Anybody here would like to speak in favor of the applicant's request? This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak in favor of? Come forward, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Wayne Madden. I live in Clayton County and I didn't hear anything that she said that would be detrimental to the community, so I think you all should give her a hundred percent support. And thank goodness she's thinking about doing something like that. I commend her.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody else in favor of? How about in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Okay. Nobody to oppose? Okay. Anybody opposed? Ma'am, you got two minutes if you want to have a closing statement. You don't have to, but if you like.
Okay, I'm gonna pass on the closing statement. You could teach kids, you could do this.
Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, yes, on the conditions, the ZAG recommended conditions, the hours of operation, are you open Monday through Friday?
As of now, it's more so a Friday through Sunday situation because most events take place during the weekend. If we are able to do during the week, because I didn't think about repasses, there's always a need for a place to, you know, have repass. But that's, you know, I guess future thinking.
I did visit the facility and it does look nice.
Thank you.
Now, this about the not to exceed fifty people. How do we regulate that?
So that is, the occupancy load is regulated by the fire marshals. So that is, the occupancy load is regulated by the Fire and Master's Office. They, they add the calculation pursuant to the NFP 101, a lot safety code.
Okay, and I read something about the parking.
The staff did have questions about the parking, however, Ms. Griffin did reach out to the adjoining property owner, which is the building in front that is, has actual frontage on Highway 138. And we were just informed of that, that she did reach out to them and was granted approval. We calculated the parking in accordance with the highway, the east-west Highway 138 corridor overlay district. And we have a couple more things we need to figure out, but the parking is going to be, has been abated. The issues with parking, with the, with the parking in front of, at 1240 Highway 138, that will ease staff's concerns.
Okay, so now if we vote for it tonight, then when will that be handled or taken care of? How does that work?
See?
I'm on a two-week break, I'm a teacher, so I have nothing but time.
Me too.
The, um...
That was a concern of mine when I visit the location regarding the parking, but that's why I'm...
And I understand, we did get agreements from each business that was there, a shared parking agreement where they agreed that we could share parking.
Okay. Okay, is that okay with...
Yes, ma'am. The, thanks to the overlay district, the parking numbers was reduced for the overall development. And so there's, there is 100 and... It was developed with 110 parking spaces back in 2000, I believe, 2004 actually. And the overlay district only requires 99 parking spaces.
Well, I'm thinking that hours of operation would probably help on that too, with the other businesses probably are from eight or nine to four or five.
Yes, ma'am, we're opposite, our times are opposite. So when they're in business, we're not there and vice versa.
Okay, we're taking all that under consideration and all, I recommend approval for BOC 2210-0242.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
One second.
Is it with the condition? Oh, I'll wait till the questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, definitely with the two conditions.
Well, she, you're agreeing to the conditions.
Oh, absolutely.
The only thing, if I may, Madam Vice Chair, you asked a question about the time and the days. Are we able to limit a business to only specific days? Is that within our policing...
That's what she's requesting, we're not limiting them to that.
Right, yeah, I get that, but I'm just trying to make sure we're not going to put ourselves in a predicament by putting it in here as a use.
And also, can I add?
Commissioner Hambrich.
With that being said, and you spoke of perhaps repasses or doing everything, would you not want to open up the days of operations within that instead of just being Friday and Sunday? Instead of limiting, expand those days. If it's the same hours.
I just have concerns with the zoning, it's very clear on what we can zone, and I don't want to get in the space of teetering on free enterprise. I understand about the parking spaces, Madam Vice Chair, I get that. But what concerns me more than hours is specific days, because then how that's going to be regulated? And then so, I don't know that that's within our...
Well, the, if she is, if her business can only be zoned, if the condition is only satisfied by the fact that parking will be available at these days and times, if she expands it beyond that to where there's less than 99 or whatever the overlay requires, then that might affect her ability to be able to satisfy the conditions that you all have within the overlay district. So I understand that she says, well, I might want to do repass, but repass typically aren't done at night, they're usually done sometime during the day.
Correct.
And if that requires parking during that time, it's going to conflict with those businesses that are there. And apparently, again, just from hearing what she's saying, that they're agreeing to allow her to park or have people park when they're not in business.
Right. Does she have to come back?
It's shared parking, so they're in agree, I'm sorry.
That's what I was gonna say, Madam Vice Chair, and I wanted to speak to you, is there, as opposed to putting this condition in here, can we just leave it to where there is an agreement on parking, that no parking would be over that set amount? Because else we're putting a regulation on one business owner that is totally unfair and is limiting her ability for free enterprise. So that's the only thing that I'm saying, for us.
Let me say this, if you see the location, you'll see why that's in here. It can't be, I mean, the parking is very limited during the day, you know, with those beauty shops and restaurants and other things.
Right.
And I'm sure that those spaces are being used during the day.
Right.
Did you, you want to say, are you with? Yes.
You can see I'm itching back here.
I know.
I'm sorry, I'm the husband of Miss Stephanie.
State your name for me.
I'm Rico Pascal, I'm the husband of Miss Stephanie Griffin Pascal. Like, like, like we've said before, we have got shared parking from the other tenants that are there. The barber shop is only appointment only, so it's only like maybe three cars just throughout the whole week because they're only appointment only, so they don't have like people waiting or anything. You know, the church is only on Sundays and we try to operate after the hour just to give them respect. And as far, it's not a business that the gym has left, and I think it's a business in on the end. So we really kind of is flip-flop on the hours. And I talked to Mr. Tony De Seco, which is at the 1240 building, because we will only need access to his back part, and that's only on Sundays. So we're trying to do our best not to cause any trouble in that, in that particular strip mall, and just try to, you know, everybody work together.
Y'all are good with the hours and...
Yeah.
With what's in here.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Those in favor of?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
I approve it, I just, I don't know legally about the hours limit in the enterprise, that's all.
It's unanimous.
So we are staying with what's in the...
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
Mr. Chair, the board will now hear public comments.
Mr. Chair, the board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit to speak before the board, with a total time of 20 minutes for public comments. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters with the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members. Shouting and using obscene language shall be prohibited. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Before I call the first name, Commissioner Hambrich would like to have a point of privilege. Ma'am?
Yes, this is our last meeting before the new year. So, you know, I want to say thank you to the citizens of Clayton County, especially those in District Two. And more importantly, I want to say thank you to our staff that has been so diligent in working with us and all. You all, I mean, every time I call, you know, you all answer or call me back or whatever, and I really appreciate that. The leadership, our leadership, I think you all are just, just great. I really, really appreciate it. And you all have a tough job, not so much the directors and department heads, you all answer to our COO and also to the Chief of Staff. But our COO answers to five different bosses. That is not an easy task. And I really want to thank you for that, Mr. Stanford, and also thank you so much, our Chief of Staff. That addition has really added a lot to the whole operation of the county and all. And I don't think people really know or realize or appreciate how much. So I want to say thank you to the Clayton County staff, directors, COO. So thank you all so much.
All right, Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County, Madam Clerk, Commissioners, Chairman Turner. The agenda item number 15, Ordinance 2022-271, I'm glad it was pulled out. An item like that should not be in a hidden agenda, our consent agenda. It should be discussed separately because it'll pass and the people of this county won't know what the heck is going on. As far as your compliment, I watched the December 6th Board of Commissioners meeting. It was embarrassing. Some commissioners were rude and condescending. Commissioners approved the Code of Conduct based on parliamentary procedures and Robert's Rules of Order, but Section 2-37-11 has very little disciplinary consequences. Conflict of interest, Section 2-3710, quote, "Each of the board members agree that they will announce potential conflicts of interest before board action is taken," unquote. Commissioner Franklin voted so moved to approve $375 per hour for her legal fees, a blatant conflict of interest. Three commissioners voted in June to hire Terminus and to pay him $87,000, then ignored their recommendation. Terminus did not find a violation of the former CFO's contract. Commissioners cannot adjudicate a contract. Now, three commissioners are being sued by the former CFO. Commissioner Franklin violates parliamentary procedures and her oath of office. Where's the audit for her abuse of funds and power and state ethics board investigation? Where's, this county is going to go bankrupt with lawsuits and corruption. Where's the accountability?
Yes, ma'am, Gwen Gooden.
Madam Clerk, Gwendolyn Gooden, Clayton County. Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman Turner. Why are we paying for legal fees up to $375 per hour for Commissioner Franklin when $250 per hour is the allowable amount? However, this fee is only paid by the county when a commissioner is sued in connection with the duties as commissioner. This is not the case in Bibbins versus Franklin. Commissioner Franklin pressed false charges against Ms. Bibbins with the Jonesboro Police Department, which were dismissed. Vice Chair Hambrich, the vote that you took on November 15th to approve Commissioner Franklin's legal fees was inappropriate and her vote was a blatant conflict of interest. Clayton County Code of Orders, Article 2, Code of Ethics, Section 70-64, conflict of interest. Commissioner can not vote on anything that will benefit her or him. In Section 70-65, abstention, Commissioner Franklin should have abstained, therefore a vote in the matter must be retaken by the board. Where in civil service rules and regulations is an employee given a $40,000 raise at one time or even in a year's time? How is it the new chief deputy serves to be compensated $10,000 more than a exer? Like my daddy used to say, money don't grow on trees. Thank you.
Atanya Funny.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, Atanya Jean Funny, Clayton County. A few meetings ago, the acting CFO asked for outside assistance. She told you that her background is in accounting and she needed help with building the budget. Three of our commissioners denied her the funding for outside assistance because you said that she had inside help. Today, on the consent agenda, number 23, you all have approved outside council assistance at the rate of $295 an hour. But the council has, the county has inside counsel. So I find that your governance is very inconsistent with the needs of the community. Also, with Article 2-6 that has been pulled, the amended version did not put the county in compliance with the state. And also, Mr. Reed stated that this was the first reading, but on Section 5, it said that had it been approved, it would have gone into effect January the 3rd, 2023, but the next meeting was going to be after that date. So when was the second reading going to happen? Also, Commissioner Franklin, I would like to know if you think it is professional or ethical to endorse a chief deputy as sheriff before special elections, as you did on your social media? And lastly...
Please listen for her frame so she's able to speak.
And lastly, I respectfully ask that public comment be placed back at the beginning of the agenda and restored to three minutes. Commissioner Hambrich, while you were thanking everyone, I feel that your vote on this particular matter is very insensitive to the community. Thank you.
Your time's up. Miki Garber.
This is the last meeting of the year, and I want to reiterate Vice Chair Hambrich's words that she's already said, but it needs to be said twice. I want to thank all the employees who work for all of us in Clayton County. Merry Christmas, good health, and a prosperous new year to all of us. In closing, I want to say thank you, Chairman Turner, for the card that you gave the veterans and the pen, the card that you sent to all the veterans. I just want to ask one thing, does this pen mean we're going steady? Thank you very much. Happy New Year and a positive note at the end, which will bring a positive note in the beginning of the year. Thank you all.
Thank you. Crystal Perry. Crystal Perry.
I'm here today on behalf of Melanated Pearl, so I wanted to start by saying thank you. On November 9th, our organization, through special election, was selected to help with the distribution of rental funds. People who are probably standing up behind me are some of the people who have been impacted by those funds. We started on the 19th, and we placed 150 citizens who identify as homeless or displaced. That is the county, again, working with the small nonprofits. The problem is on yesterday, the first 30 days were up. And so the first... And so the first set of families seventeen were put out, not because we don't have funding, because of the complexities of this process. So I'm really here just as we continue to work through this to ask for grace on behalf of our citizens. The neighborly application is not ADA compliant. There is no adaptability for seniors. We have people who don't have email. You have to have an email, who are illiterate. We have a literacy problem here. Helping somebody complete this application in one sitting can take up to five hours. If people, we had a wonderful event, three-day event, we had forty, four thousand people and forty computers. So it is, I want to say, not just Melanated Pearl, all the nonprofits are all hands on deck. Melanated Pearl is an organization that is volunteer-based, and so I'm very proud to say that the people we have served is because the people behind me are helping each other. Complete applications. People right now open their rooms so that mothers do not have to sleep in their cars with children. And so we are here not for conflict because, as I said to them, if you're displaced, they don't know who their commissioner is. People are moving, but we are collectively here today to, so you know that the need is great.
I'm sorry, your time is up. But thank you so much for what you do.
One second, please. I too want to say thank you so very much. From day one when I met you, your organization has done exactly what it set out to do. So I'm glad that organizations like yours was finally able to receive that money and to be able to get it into the hands. I can tell you that every time we received a phone call and I sent someone to you, there was a response, and I appreciate that.
Teresa Tally, Hampton, Georgia. First, I would like to thank Riverdale for displaying beautiful Christmas lights. They are so pretty. And I would like to thank Commissioner Anderson for hosting the Christmas celebration with Stacey Abrams in the Artis Lado. Now let's talk about loyalty. Loyalty is a powerful word that everyone cannot hold. Why is it always one commissioner always wanting to pass something? But they need two votes to achieve their agenda. When was the last time you received any support from that person? Has this person attended any of your events? Every decisions that you vote on affect your district also. We voted to remove the beautification program to use the money to put pictures of yourself around the county. Code enforcement, they really need the help. They need the bunny. They need people to help pick up the trash around the county. We have a special election in two thousand twenty-three for sheriff, and I know a lot of people are going for that position. Well, the problem is, we don't know who they are. So is it possible that everyone that is running for sheriff, can they come before us at a board meeting so we can meet them? So when it's time for us to vote, we could put a name with a picture.
I'm sure that there's going to be plenty of community events hosting and sponsoring those candidates for sheriff. So just stay tuned, and I'm sure that they will send out notice. So please, and I encourage everyone, any race, know who you're voting for, get to know your candidates. But thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, Clayton County, Commissioners, Chairman, citizens, happy holidays. But we're about to, we're about to embark upon twenty twenty-three, and we have left a lot of unfinished business in twenty twenty-two. I never got a phone call on the fifty-four thousand dollars that was spent on the signs. Secondly, we had an IGA agreement between the county and the Development Authority that is still out there. I think that agreement has been discussed, that's been two years ago. Why can't we finish some of these products, projects? We have, we have included mandatory trash pickup. There's no update. I mean, everything is going on and on and on, but we are not moving forward in the spirit of excellence. We have spent splotch dollars on the business incubator. We haven't gotten an update on it. The Roman Group, have they shown proof of funds for the mixed-use development yet? Why are we allowing people to tie our property up when there's other people interested in it? But the number one thing that we need is beautification on our roads. GDOT, I don't know if we got a partner with them, Tire Boulevard, Highway eighty-five, fifty-four. We got to have beautification, shrubbery, and plants as we move forward to move this county forward in the spirit of excellence. So all of these things that we need to find a conclusion to so that we begin to move the county forward in the spirit of excellence. There's enough of everything else going on, but we got to have a positive agenda. We all got to work together. Y'all represent three hundred thousand citizens, and we would like to move the county forward. And that's all I'd say. Let's do that in twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Yancey, Rex, Georgia. Several members of this board have not and are not operating in the best interests of the county and citizen. Instead, all we have received from them are petty episodes in mini drama series of flying monkeys, propaganda, censorship, dictatorship, utter virus actions, lawsuits, misuse and mismanagement of our tax dollars, unethical conduct, abuse of power, negligent violating residents' civil rights, freedom of speech, removing residents from virtual town hall meetings, and threatening to remove from in-person meetings by use of police force for asking questions. They also have lied on residents, conflict of interest, and personal gang, i.e., constituent A, aka babysitter. The results of this petty issues and their many drama series have been created by two convicts, and they continue to operate using the tactics of these two convicts. Ms. Franklin, you have made verbal and written statements regarding public comments moved to the end, and time decreased from three minutes to two minutes because you consider my comments as threats to you and the reason for having sheriff deputies serve as bodyguards for you and the two other women. So you're saying citizens come in and describing facts about your actions are a threat. Do you care to explain that? Let the ruck, let the ruckus show, she did not answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Lowery.
Hello, my name's Catherine Lowery. I'm with Clayton, I live in Clayton County. I've been a business owner since nineteen ninety and a resident here since nineteen eighty-five. My concerns is, I run Lucky's Catfish Pond, and since nineteen, twenty nineteen at least, I've been in constant communication with everybody in GDOT and CW Matthews. They have blocked my property. They did a survey in twenty seventeen of the lake and supposedly the swamp. Unfortunately, that survey can no longer be found. I have worked with unanimous numbers of people about the construction on fifty-four, about the way the survey was lost, the silt has filled up my swamp. Finally, in October, they put a basin for all the storm drains to run down into this basin before it went into my swamp. In two months, there's more than twenty-four inches of silt in that basin with trash overflowing into my swamp and into my pond. The trash is unbelievable. They have put a dumpster down there. For the last four years, I have had to pick up trash around that dumpster, including a hundred and twenty pounds of rotten meat from a restaurant, and get it in that dumpster so they would haul it off. All this is going down into my swamp. They do not have porta potties. I have areas where they're pooping on my property, toilet paper. All this is on videos and pictures. I have come to you for your help. The number of people, I've went to code enforcement, I've went to transportation, Aaron Gilbert, Eric Young, Brittany McCullough, Robin McColler, everybody, EPA, code enforcement, transportation, environmental, and you know what? Everybody has told me to come here. Over four years of pictures and videos of trash. The dumpsters there, they don't use it. Please, somebody go down there and just take a look at this. They've put a medium that I do not know whether.
I'm sorry, but your time is up, ma'am.
Please help me. Please help me.
Juanita White. Hello, Juanita White, Clayton County. I'm here in representation of Ms. Melanated Pearl. What's upsetting me right now is, I'm thirty-nine years old, I'm from Miami, Florida. I've been down here since I was about twelve. So some of the chairmen sitting here right now were in my elementary schools, and the facial expressions when she came up to speak while some of us are sleeping in our cars in Clayton County was pretty nasty. Not only did, yeah, it was nasty, speaking of you, because I remember coming up with you, and I don't remember you being so nasty. But moving forward, some of us are sleeping in our cars, and I watch some of these family members leave crying, hurt. Christmas is around the corner. So while we have smirks on our face, let's remember that if this was your family member or your grandkids, you would help them. So before you take from somebody else and sit here being so cocky, I remember when you were down here, sir. So treat us like you would treat your own family members. Like you have these young kids back here, they have babies, help them. You know what I mean? Like she said, when we were in Clayton County trying to get our applications done, you had, your staff was rushing us, taking the laptops from us, not allowing us to assist each other at that time. They were rushing to leave. So if Clayton County is for Clayton County, let's act like it, because it don't feel like it. I've been sitting back here watching everybody's face. Smirk all you want to, but I've been sitting back here watching everybody's face. I also stood up front and watched one of your officers balk at a young lady. He couldn't even pay attention to what was going on behind him because he was so busy trying to look her up and now. So Christmas is Sunday. If y'all can help this lady, this lady came out with a truck and clothed us and clothed people babies and fed people babies. This is not a joke. It's not a joke. So while you up here cutting people off and tying this up, stop being cocky because you were a little.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Have a good day, Mr. Turner.
You too, thank you. Larissa Banks, and she will be the last one. And as I stated, she'll be the last speaker. Anybody who is on this list, we will pick up at the next meeting. You'll be first on the list to speak. Yes, ma'am, stay tuned.
Hey, my name is Larisha Banks. I resigned in Clayton County. I am with Melanated Pearl. I was in, I was in a shelter before she came along, what the organization, I have four kids. And for us to be noticed at the last minute with us being in the extended state that she helped put us in, I don't think that was right because people have kids, Christmas, like the lady said, holidays is right around the corner. I think that we should have had something, we should have been known ahead of time about this, especially with people having kids, and then not even that. If that was the case, there's no shelters out here for women and children. It's only one shelter that takes women and children out in Georgia. I don't understand why it's more shelters for men than it is for women and kids. That's unacceptable. And I really appreciate that she did come along, because I was at the end of the street in a shelter, and she helped me and my four kids, and she put us in, like the lady said, she did come, she clothed, she feeds, everything. So I mean, hopefully you can find somewhere in your heart to do whatever it takes to get whatever assistance that families need. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. And before we ask about executive session, I just want to make sure I recognize our two members of our local delegation that's here, Yasmine Neal and Representative Rhonda Verno. Thank y'all for being here. It's good to see you. Executive session.
Mr. Chair, I have one thing to say after that. I think the audience needs to understand, and especially, I know you know, we've had conversations, this is why it's important that you pay attention where your money's going. Oftentimes, especially us ladies, we have to sit up here and we listen to a lot. But if these ladies had not fought to make sure that money was still not going to an organization, that we were getting complaint after complaint after complaint from, or even internally, I thank every employee, but this board knows, we set up an office, and that particular office was supposed to do a task, and unfortunately, all we kept getting was complaints of no return phone call. So when you talk about how the money happened, it's imperative that you know it's because we were in the trenches from the beginning and doing the research and finding out that the money necessarily was not getting where we thought it was going. If you go back to the other meetings, you'll see that we held up votes on things until we can get the money into hands of those nonprofits in our community. Specifically, we talked about the fact we chose an organization outside of Clayton County when we have organizations like Melanated Pearl or many other organizations, MTS Foundation. But let me tell you this, it really, really, really touched my heart to see that the money is going where it needs to go. But you know how quick of a turnaround it was? Not even thirty days. Think if you all were here and you stay involved moving forward and you don't get caught up in the propaganda, but you make sure that you know how these votes are going, this could have happened a little bit sooner possibly. So I thank you, I thank you, I thank you, but be involved, get in the know, don't get caught up in all the rest of the stuff. We are working, and we are working hard, and that's why this happened.
Mr. Reed? No.
Yes, executive session on real estate personnel and litigation.
All right, and before I ask to go into executive session, I'd just like to echo the sentiment from other commissioners up here. Holiday season, wish everybody a very prosperous, safe, and merry Christmas. And that goes especially for our citizens as well as our employees who are doing an excellent job for servicing the citizens here in Clayton County. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Can I say something too, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
I also want to thank everyone for coming out today, and also, Mr. Chairman, at some point in time, we're going to talk about why Melanated Pearl is being installed and if we can move this money like they, like, like we need to. I just want to say also, there will be one more toy drive in District One. So if you all need to see me, it's going to be at Now Faith Church. So it's going to be on Christmas morning, and I will be there working Christmas morning to get some things out into the community. We will have clothes, we will have toys and everything. So I, we, I want to make sure that if you need help, please see me, and we'll see how, you know, I know you're going to say, well, if I can't get there, you know, we'll, we'll work on that as well. But I need you all to know, there's going to be one more toy drive in, in District One, and it'll be at Now Faith, and we'll, I'll talk to you all about the address and things of that nature. Thank you. And also to our staff, thank you for everything that you have done this year. With me being a new board member, you all have worked with me, taught me a lot, and I just. I just thank you all for everything that you've done for me as a new board member coming on, and I appreciate you, and I love you all. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, you have anything? All right. Motion to go into executive session-
So moved.
I had, I had not said it. Y'all slow down. For litigation, personnel, and real estate. Is there a motion? So moved? No, they, I didn't call for one. Commissioner Davis? I did? I think you did. Hang on, slipper. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed?
Ready, Mr. Chair.
All right. Motion to reconvene. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Those in favor, aye? Opposed? It's unanimous, Mr. Reed?
Would you like me to-
Take them together, please.
All right. First is a settlement agreement in the matter of Clayton County, Darren Merrill versus Clayton County relating to a petition for cert in the Superior Court of Clayton County under C. Civil Action 2022, CB 01689-10. The amount is seventy thousand dollars, broken down through back pay, and attorney's fees as set out in the settlement agreement. The next is settlement agreement in the matter of Davan Tripp, D-A-V-U-A-N-T-R-I-P-P, versus Clayton County and James McDonald relating to an accident that occurred on September eighth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, at or near the intersection of Mount Zion and Fielder Road, in the amount of sixty-two thousand, sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. The next is Ebony Tripp, E-B-O-N-E, same last name, also against Clayton County and James McDonald in relating to an accident that occurred on September eighth, twenty twenty, at or near the intersection of twenty, intersection of Mount Zion Road and Fielder Road in Clayton County, in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. The next is Gloria Marcus relating to an accident that occurred on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at or near the intersection of Forest Parkway and Jonesboro Road, and this is also related to Clayton County and Mitchell Brock, and this is in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. And the last is Tiara, T-I-A-R-A Connor as legal guardian of Darone Connor, D-A-R-O-M-E, relating to an accident that occurred on or around February sixth, twenty twenty, at or near eighty-four, eighty-two Thomas Road in Jonesboro, Clayton County, also relating to Clayton County in unique purvis. This is to resolve that case in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And for all of these cases, asking the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue sources and expenses as required by the referenced agreements.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Ms. Mayor?
Good evening. This is a personnel request, and I'm requesting that the Deputy Chief Financial Officer for Financial Accounting be brought up to the salary of one, one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and fifty, in line with your decision on November fifteenth, to change the compensation rate for that position.
All right. I'm going to make the motion, but also the motion that the pay goal is retroactive dating back to November fifteenth.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Lou Chana Farmer.
What is it?
Lou Chana Farmer.
Oh. Is there a mo, I made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Just one quick question. Is that the salary itself or salary and total compensation?
The salary itself, you voted on to be arranged between one thirty and one forty-five. So the, to put it on the right grading step, it's one thirty, eight fifty. The total compensation is one sixty-seven, oh sixty-two with benefits.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to adjourn. I'll second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.